We should approve the payroll allowance.
Okay.
Any discussion?
All over the table.
All right. Check, I hope you can check our time in the file for you. Second, any discussion? All over the table. Other forms, if anyone is here, you know, to come to the town and gather. Now we can do it. Then it's going to executive session now. I think we'll have to ask. So we are in the executive session. Welcome back and also session number one.
First time when I was, I think I was 52 when I had the very first one. Didn't even know what it was. Told my uncle Eddie, who was a tired baby guy, and he said, "When was the last time you had a drink?" I went, "I don't drink." That's a problem. We need to see Dr. Jeff Daniels talking to me. That alcohol, we need to flush out all the toxins. [laughing].
Because the scheduled agenda has the finance. We're going to go through some of this other stuff before 7:30 in case there's somebody that wants to, that thinks it's going to be at 7:30 and they want to get involved in.
Yeah.
So on the whole business strategic plan, okay?
Yes. So the board received the draft from our consultant, Anne Donner, for this draft of the strategic plan. I spoke with her last week after that, and we talked about next steps. She suggested, and I think that makes sense, but I wanted to obviously see how the board felt. She suggested that if there were amendments, suggestions, that the board would like to see on their strategic plan, that you could forward them to her with a CC to me if you so desire, and she could incorporate them and then come to present a final strategic plan at the February 15 meeting that suits the board.
Fine. Any discussion? That will be on the agenda for the 15th.
And I think for her purposes, if, I think if, say, a week from today, if any of the board members have any suggested edits, if they could get them to her, I think that would help her in the process.
Okay. So she needs it by the 8?
Yes, please.
Okay. By the 8. Administrator's report?
School audit.
Yes. Thank you. So as the board knows from the past updates, the, we had put out an invitation for bids, both Whitman and Hanson, to complete an operational audit of the schools. That invitation for bids closed on Friday. It did go out on combines, the state's procurement website. It went out to all certified public accountant firms that I could, I could find through extensive search with some town administrator and town manager colleagues who do not already work with the schools, with the town of Whitman or with the town of Hanson. And additionally, actually, it would also went out to a few firms, CPA firms, who do not typically do governmental accounting, but do nonprofit accounting, since this is slightly in their wheelhouse. Unfortunately, despite all that, we did not receive any bids back by the deadline from, on Friday. And as of right now, we, Selectman Lamatina is the liaison to this process from the, previously identified from the board's selectmen here. Laura Fitzgerald, accountant, is the equivalent of the liaison from Hanson Board of Selectmen. And the town administrator in Hanson and myself are scheduled to meet on Thursday to talk about next steps. But certainly, you know, if the board has any discussion now or input now about next steps, that would be helpful. I would say I did reach out and had conversations, where I was able to get on the phone with a few certified public accounting partners and certified public accounting firms who typically do governmental accounting work for municipalities and school districts in Massachusetts. And all of them said, "We'd love to do this, but we are just so busy right now with the CARES Act, with ARPA, that we simply don't have the time." So that is where we are right now. You know, obviously, you know, any input from the board is welcome. And then, as I said, we do have this meeting scheduled on Thursday as well with the smaller group to discuss how to move forward.
Do you have anything to add?
I think, unfortunately, we didn't get the word, but I think between, we said, "I can't believe this," or "Come up somewhere, I'm used to get this out, be able to do it." And I don't think the decision is rendered. I think it's, it doesn't necessarily be peace for us, and we're gonna pursue all avenues to get somebody to bid it.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone have any questions or comments?
No.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the possible use of the town hall basement or an historical museum.
Yes. So this is something that we've spoken about at a, at a previous board meeting. This is a request from the Historical Commission Chair, Marie Leila. Just wanted to give the board, the board an update on where the, where the process is right now and get any feedback you have on that process. Two pieces. One, there, there are, there are a series of artifacts and other things held by the Historical Commission, so they would want to have those in any future Whitman History Museum. And further, I met with John Harding, excuse me, John from Harding Print, John Campbell, to, at Marie's suggestion, to talk a little bit about his desire and on, if both possibly to donate a lot of materials that the board probably knows and the public knows, he has collected over in his private museum at Harding Print. And in addition, some of those materials are also owned by the Whitman Historical Society as opposed to the Historical Commission. He very generously offered that if there was an appropriate museum space, that he would want to donate those items to the town. So now, the steps that I would suggest is for the Historical Commission to really take the lead on it, since they have a specific idea, and specifically Marie, to formulate a specific idea about what exactly, the exact space that they would like to have, exactly what they would like to do with that space, if they'd like to have, you know, revolving exhibits, how they would staff it, staffing plan for that. And also, working with our building commissioner, Bob Curran, to make sure that obviously all the Americans with Disabilities Act issues are addressed, that any kind of structural issues in that old police station space in the basement at Town Hall are addressed. And then I think moving all of that forward with an idea about how much it would cost, what exactly would be exhibited, how frequently it would be done, what the staffing would be, and then moving towards likely Community Preservation Act application, once that committee gets going. This is the, as a quick reminder, this is the first year when Community Preservation Act is in place, the first year that the town is collecting monies on that surcharge. So, you know, I think once that, the Historical Commission is scheduled to meet again on this on February 15th, once they meet and in conjunction with Marie, we get a sort of firmer plan, I think she and I both would intend to come back to the board to get, to seek formal, formal approval of that space, what specific space it is, and also have an idea about what it would cost to do it, and then seek that approval from the board at that time. So just wanted to keep the board, obviously, up to speed on where that process is.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? If you have a comment, Dan.
I've been in touch with Dr. Hickey, our superintendent of Seltschrovo Tech. He said that if we decide that that's what we would like to do with that section, that he would have his staff come in and look at the project and see what Seltschrovo Tech can contribute, his classes is doing it there. They, he said the only issue that he has is if there's anything like asbestos or whatever, that would have to be removed before they could touch it. But anything that they can do in carpentry and metal works and, and all their different trades that is needed to work on that building, they'd be glad to help out and be a good teaching lessons for the kids. I also talked to Marie, Ms. Leila, last night at, at beginning of our special town meeting, and she said, I told her that she was happy, and she said that they're in the works of, of raising funds to pay for, you know, and as much as they can. I don't know if they want to do fundraising or whatever, it's up to her. She would have to find that. I thought she might be here tonight to talk about it, but I guess not. That being said, if in fact we decide to go forward, we gotta hold it to Dr. Hickey, Dr. Hickey, he will send his man, I think Bob Morel, will come in, look at the project, what we want to get done, and if Seltschrovo Tech can do any of it, they'd be glad to. And of course, there's a cost to it, but a lot cheaper than what we would have to farm out, you know?
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I like the idea. On people, obviously, I would just like to kind of, you know, the cost and also go ahead with Bob and possibly tell, I think in the Bob's section, remove records down there and whatnot, and see exactly what we have for space, which is not something, you know, and we have, we don't know exactly what space wise is going to be available. So you probably would say yes tonight. I mean, obviously, I think there's a lot of unknowns, but on face value, I like the idea.
I have another thought on that. The records, we had changed the old cells into areas where we put records. I'm certainly sure that if the museum thought that that would be part of the museum, you know, it was the stake of the old town hall and the old police station, that a couple of the, like, I know Todd uses one of the offices, but there's a couple, there's a deputy chief's office and our chief's office that maybe could be set up and used to hold those public records.
Well, I think we, a couple of years ago, we invested some money in some filing systems that, that are down there.
Yeah.
And, and I know that there's some IT infrastructure in a couple of those rooms. So it, I think, just going forward, I think that needs to be part of the plan of establishing, and then obviously a cost.
Yep. I agree.
Absolutely. Yeah, and just to reiterate, that is, you know, Marie's taking, taking, taking the ball on that. I'm here to help her with that. Obviously, Bob's here to help her with that, but at 100%, you know, just wanted to keep the board, you know, in, with that set of knowledge about where it's going, but absolutely, we're gonna have a, you know, we're gonna have a solid plan, at least an outline, that specifies the exact space, specifies a cost estimate, specifies, and I, I would seek, you know, specifies, again, when it would be open, would it be revolving exhibits, who would staff it, all these things, you know, so that, so that the town can go into it with clear eyes about what exactly it's going to be.
Now, is all that going to happen by February 15?
No, no, I'm sorry. So February 15th is their next meeting about this, the historical mission.
Right.
No, no. So, so I just wanted the board to know that they're meeting about it, but no, I, no, that won't.
So subsequent till?
That's right.
And we have a meeting on that. Work on their plans and come to one of our meetings.
Correct. And, and Marie intends to set up sort of a subcommittee of the commission to specifically work on this project.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, Justin?
I was glad Lincoln mentioned the Community Preservation Act funds. This is, sounds like a great project for, for that. I know the committee, an hour and a half ago, was discussing this project, so they're aware of it, to potential use for, yeah, a new revenue source.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Auxiliary police officer pay rate.
Yes. So Chief is here as well, if there are any sort of extremely detailed questions about this, but Chief Hamlin identified that auxiliary police officers are at a $20 an hour pay rate. It has not, that rate has not changed, has not risen since July of 2014. Previously, it was $14 per hour. And he was seeking an increase to $26 an hour for auxiliary officers. As a point of comparison, the crossing guards right now are paid more, $24.88 per hour, more than the auxiliary officers. And so Chief Hamlin identified that, you know, this, in order to, in our continuing quest to retain auxiliary officers and the great work that they do, despite the challenges they face, in particular the recent challenges with the requirements of police reform, that this would be a common sense way to, to increase that. In the past, and Town Council confirms, in the past, the past police chief simply implemented it on his own, that there are sufficient funds in the police department salaries line to accomplish this in this current fiscal year. So it doesn't require a board vote. You're of course welcome to take one if you want, but we mostly just wanted to inform the board that that was going on, and the chief would intend to go forward with it unless there's an objection from the board.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do. You're saying the crossing guards today make $24.88?
That's correct.
And we want to increase, have they been getting raises on a yearly basis?
Yes.
They have? I mean, if, why not go with the auxiliary, with the auxiliary police officers to the same rate, $24.88? They're basically...
Honestly, they should be paid more than crossing guards perform one function. Police department, we perform all the functions. They perform the same functions as a full-time officer, so along with all the police reform issues, they're gonna get additional training from the budget planning and moving forward there, so they're better trained.
Okay. Excellent. I agree.
Is, sorry, these auxiliary police officers aren't part of the bargaining unit?
No.
No.
Okay.
I think it makes perfect sense, especially, I think that everyone's been around town all day, you know, the goal of our auxiliary plan is that apparently it has played for years, and especially, you know, it's gonna be tough to get these guys and keep them with the demands of a police dollar, through a police reform. There needs to be some type of benefit, because it obviously benefits the, the town of Whitman.
Just, just one more thing. They still perform their volunteer on weekends, so that is unpaid. This would be outside of that purview, so that would be, when they fill in for a full-time officer, should an opening come up this far as, like, over time we couldn't fill for, you know, for one of those lines? So they still perform that volunteer function if they don't pay a fee.
Okay. So we're not gonna talk about it. I don't want to do anything that would give the false impression that we were setting a precedent and that the strong chief had to come to us every time he wanted to, to do something, so. So, but you can tell that the board thinks it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Okay, chief. And guess what? It's, we have three minutes left to kill before 7:30, but we're gonna go three minutes early. We're now about to have a, a joint meeting with the, with the Finance Committee. We're gonna be entertained by a presentation of the town administrator's proposed budget for fiscal year 2023, involves a PowerPoint presentation. He's also put together some estimated figures, just the beginning of the process. And I know it was important for the administrator to have both of us receive this at the, at the same time. We received it, I don't know when you guys received it, but we received it today around noon time or so. So we haven't really had a chance to study it, except for Randy, who studies everything really quickly, as soon as he possibly can. This is just, this is just a, a presentation. And as you'll notice on the very first slide, when we get to the first slide, this is a presentation, and then there's a schedule of events that will happen over the next series of months that involves our two, our two bodies to cooperate and, and know what each body is, is doing. I had mentioned to Lincoln prior to the meeting today. Lincoln, if you could switch to the first slide.
Sure.
And what we, and what we see is that on December 7th, the department heads submitted their request. February 1st, which is today, the town administrator presents a balanced budget for the BOSS and COM, and we're all here. And the next part of the schedule is from February to early March, the board considers his budget proposal and votes the town side of it. The town side, that appropriation is gonna appear on the annual town meeting warrant. At the same time, February 12th, FENCOM is reviewing the proposed budget, and I imagine seeing departments like you usually do. I suggested to Lincoln that maybe we want to add something to this, and that if the Finance Committee is amenable, to add April 12th as a FENCOM and bonus Selectman joint meeting, because we will, we will all have done our work on the budget, and it might be a good time to see how close we are, and we can come up with, with something that we, we both agree on. I don't know if we can come as close as we did last year. Last year, basically, in our whole budget, we were only $10,000 apart. We, we disagreed on, on one item in that whole budget, which is, is pretty good, pretty good. Maybe we can, maybe we can do better this year, and hopefully, that, that February 12th meeting will help out. Does, that make sense to you?
Yeah. The only thing I can say, Mr. Chairman, is we will be, I mean, you could actually add this to the slide as well, is we are meeting with the department heads to do budget meetings with the budget manager, starting next week.
Right.
So that process goes all the way up to that date, March 29th is our, April 5th actually is our final meeting with department. Should any get, you know, postponed, we're really kind of in a tight schedule, so that schedule works out fine. I'm, I'm certainly amenable to have another joint meeting. We had it actually tentatively scheduled for the 19th, but the 12th is perfectly fine, so.
19th would have been fine. I was thinking about the 19th too. I know that I can't be here on the 19th.
Okay.
That's all. So I, so I put it in the 12th. And I didn't want to put it out to the 26th, because that was right before the town meeting. But we, we'll, we'll just have to adjust, you know, if, if for instance, you have to have a meeting on the 12th with a department that hasn't been able to, to show up, then we'll, we'll figure something out then. I just wanted to make sure that we had, in both of our consciousnesses, joint meeting prior to, to town meeting.
I think that's a great, great schedule.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay.
Carry on.
So we'll, we'll go on to slide three. I think that the two chairs got that, got the slides too. I would like to say, just, just before jumping in too far, I do want to thank especially Town Accountant Ken Laitel, who's been very helpful in this process, Ken's here, in making sure, double checking all my numbers, having great ideas about budget savings that we can, that we can find, and just being a good sport about all of it. So I appreciate that. And I also want to note, all of the department heads were very game in working through a new way to submit their requests. I think as, as the board of selectmen knows, certainly the Finance Committee knows, that in the past, departmental budget requests were done on, on spreadsheets and through emails, and for a more than $40 million budget, that's just not very efficient. And, and if, and in addition, at its root, it caused, certainly I experienced in the first year of working through the town of Whitman's budget, that it, it produces a lot of problems with version control. No one's sure exactly where we're at, we're at at any one time. And I really appreciate the department heads and, you know, certainly the Finance Committee were game about it too, and I appreciate that, about trying this new system of having this version control. And it really helps, I think, in seeing it, but, but also in being, being sure exactly where we are in terms of balance as we go. So to the next slide, I just wanted to discuss what was in my mind, as Ken and I were putting this, this proposed balanced budget together. We've had a lot of conversation about the Madden Report on Budget. As this board knows, the board in the past voted to approve all of those recommendations. I'm happy to say that from my reading, and I've read it many times, from my reading, this budget, if adopted, would achieve all of the remaining pieces of the Madden Report on Budget that were, that were, that were put in as recommendations, both in terms of revenue and expenditures and the process itself. You have the draft strategic plan in front of you. There's certainly some pieces in here that get towards if that final plan, if that is what the final plan looks like, or something very similar. There's certainly some pieces in here that respond to that, and those goals going forward over the next five years and beyond. And then in addition, there's some sort of inside baseball things, but nevertheless very important in terms of the financial management policies that the board adopted in December, particularly with respect to free cash levels, to expected future debt levels, to stabilization fund levels, et cetera. Another, I think, key, key piece, and, you know, maybe the most important thing, I think, for any taxpayer, wherever you live, is what is the impact of this on, you know, my bottom line? What, for the average single-family taxpayer, what does this mean? And one thing that I think is really important in budgeting is to make clear what the projections are for what, you know, the average single-family residential taxpayer would be paying, and then to be clear on that, and then to also try to moderate those increases so that they can be more predictable, to take some unpredictability out of it. And this is not only predictability, but also, again, moderation. And then the final piece, and you see, I think it's this final slide, regarding some policy decisions for board of selectmen, the policymakers of the town, as to what, as to budgetarily decisions to be made upcoming here before town meeting. Again, high level on the budget summary, department heads over and above cost of living increases, department heads put in, in their requests, $1,077,000, $78,000 in expenditure increases. You can see here the major cost drivers there. The largest one outside the school piece is certainly Plymouth County Retirement Assessment. You'll see on a future slide that, that, that assessment has accelerated. It is accelerated for all members, all member units of the Plymouth County Retirement System. The retirement system has adopted a very aggressive funding schedule through 2029, fiscal year 2029. Mary Beth Carter, our treasurer collector, and I, who sits on that board, actually were just having a conversation about the aggressiveness of that schedule and the difficulty that, that means for member units, but that is the largest piece, the one, the one-time piece, the distinct piece. The second largest is to Chief Hamlin's request to fully fund unfilled police shifts. The town and the board recalls last year's budget, and it was certainly difficult to get there, but last year's budget did fund, at that time, 20% of the outstanding unfilled shifts. That $144,000 figure would fund all shifts, but you'll see later on, there is a further movement towards getting there in, in filling some unfilled shifts. And then the third largest one is stormwater management. This is a complex topic, but it is, stormwater management is required by the State Department of Environmental Protection. In the past, the town had appropriated monies for that. Superintendent Martin had chosen to take, take a break from that in fiscal year 2022. We, we are in compliance with a lot of it, and the DEP was sort of okay with that break, but, you know, he wants to continue to make the investments that we need to according to the DEP regulations. to the DEP regulations. And then outside the town side, there is a suggested $402,000 increase in the Whitman Hanson Regional School District Assessment. Obviously, that assessment is not final yet, nor will it be for a little bit likely. The superintendent is making his initial budget presentation tomorrow night, but there's a placeholder to kick off the budget process. So we have this increase. It's, you know, it is not affordable within our property tax levy. What are some steps that we took to get there? So there are $293,000 in reductions to departmental requests, recommended by me, that I think still nevertheless makes, retains some targeted investments that acknowledge the desire to get towards some of the Madden Report on Budget recommendations, to get to some of the financial policy things, but there are some reductions there. I won't go through every piece on this revenue summary. We can certainly have a further conversation about it, but that's the high level. Obviously, every budget starts with revenues. You can't do anything until you need to know your revenues first before you know your expenditures. But at a high level, I'll just hit a couple quick topics. It does include a projected 2.5% increase per the, what's allowed under Proposition 2.5, the state law. It does include a new growth estimate from Kathy Keefe, our principal assessor, that she and I agree is a conservative, but is realistic goal for new growth. It does include the debt exclusions for both the police town hall, fire station, previous project, those monies that were excluded by the voters at ballot. And then in addition, our projected portion of the high school debt. We don't have the final enrollment figure, so we don't know precisely what that is, but we're using our current 60%, which is probably pretty close. It does include the governor's cherry sheet numbers, both in terms of receipts and offsets, from the numbers that the governor issued in his proposed budget this past Wednesday. It, an important point, and I want to mention this with respect to the Madden Report, is that it does almost fully meet the Madden Report's recommendations regarding revenue. So in the Madden Report, and rightfully so, certainly in my practice experience, I agree with this, is to get to no more than 85%, to project no more than 85% in departmental receipts than what had been received in the previous fiscal year. And when we're talking about departmental receipts, the big drivers of that are motor vehicle excise, building permits, any other fees that the town collects that aren't taxes. So this gets there. As the board and the town may recall, there, many of those recommended, or projected, I should say, revenue figures were dangerously high, up to 97%, 99% in some cases. Understandable in the budget crunch that we were in, but not wise in terms of long-term budgeting and not wise, and very difficult to generate free cash, because it's not conservative budgeting. Without that generation of free cash, it's extremely difficult to have any ongoing capital plan. So that's the key Madden Report recommendation that would be almost entirely achieved here in this proposed balanced budget. The two exceptions, and these exceptions are sort of acknowledged in the financial policies that the board just adopted, is that if, it can be a demonstration that a particular revenue is almost certain to come in higher than that 85%, that it's acceptable to have a higher amount. And that's certainly the case, and we can get into that, you know, in future days or now, regarding what the excise and trash collection. I think it's certainly reasonable to expect that we'll meet those. But everything else is at 85%. I think the only other thing I'd mention on this slide is the final number, $261,892. So that is, so contrary to the last several budgets where free cash was necessary, a one-time revenue source to balance the budget, this does not envision that. You know, depending on what the school assessment comes in at, you know, that may be a factor. It should be a relatively small factor based on past increases in the school assessment. But under this proposed budget, the, there is excess levy. And that is a clear policy question for the Board of Selectmen is, do we, as we did last year as a town, want to capture that excess levy and have a higher tax rate and spend it in some way, either through savings, recommended probably capital stabilization in the school budget, some other way? Or, you know, is there some, is there some part of the full excess levy that we, as a town, would not want to, would not want to capture and provide a tax relief? So that's sort of a key policy metric that we'll see at the, I think, I believe on the last slide. Mentioned the pensions. You can see, even based on historical, the last 10 years, and particularly in the last three, or the last two fiscal years and now this upcoming fiscal year, you can see the tension that that puts on every unit's budget. So I mentioned targeted investments, and I'll mention them briefly here. Obviously, these are subject to further conversations. The stormwater management, it was requested at a higher amount by Superintendent Martin. He and I had a conversation and he did think that this slightly less amount would allow him to continue to make progress on meeting those regulations. But it is still something of a reduction. Again, similarly to last year, this budget would fund 20% of the unfilled police shifts. So we're getting up to almost 40% of the shifts that had previously been identified as unfilled. Chief Hamlin had also requested that a part-time records clerk go to full time in order to address the increased workload due to the post-commission police reform. That's obviously something that we'll continue to have a conversation about. Information technology, this was specifically identified, together with the building commissioner position in the Madden Report as a, quote, weakness. Certainly, we're in a, well, Josh McNeil does a fantastic job. That is a lot for one person and the increasing demands that we have. So it is a little bit less than the requested salary that he'd been looking at, but he and I agree in looking at some comparables that we do believe and hope that we could get someone talented for that, for that cost. Again, the full-time building commissioner. Again, identified, as I think everyone in this room knows, Bob Curran is retiring. You know, I think this is the time to consider that Madden Report identified weakness and whether or not that is something that the town would want to pursue. Certainly, I can't find a town in Massachusetts with the volume of building permits and the population that we have who does not have a full-time building commissioner. As far as I can tell, it doesn't exist, frankly. Facilities manager, this is mentioned in the draft strategic plan. I do think, you know, as a reminder, I think, again, just about everyone in this room knows, but, you know, every town building right now is serviced by one custodian and a part-time maintenance technician. They are definitely stretched thin. What they do with that is amazing, but it is certainly something that I think, in my opinion, the town needs to address sooner rather than later. It does maintain, over the last several years, the contribution to other post-employment benefits in that trust fund that funds, in our case, health insurance benefits for retirees. I think, again, as everyone in this room knows, that is a longstanding, that is a longstanding issue that the Governmental Accounting Standards Board has identified as municipalities in particular, governmental entities need to address. We are working towards our required, our eventually required contribution towards that. That's certainly going to be looked favorably upon by our ratings agencies as we go out with some expected debt that we all know is probably coming up in the next few years. And, you know, I think that's a wise investment. Briefly, and almost there, again, to talk about what is the impact, what would be the impact of this balanced budget on the average, single-family taxpayer? So you can see that past history, year over year, the dollar increases, or in one case, or two cases, three cases, actually, three cases decreases in year-over-year. Usually, obviously, it increases, but we've had, we've had this lack of predictability, right? We're getting towards predictability and moderation. So keep in mind that if we go back and access that entire excess levy, that $261,000 that we were looking at earlier, it would go up more than that $158 on average to the single-family taxpayer. But we are reaching the average in the last 10 years and we are reaching that moderation point. Here's that same information in percentages. You can see it's similar, but you have a flavor for that. So, and here's the, you know, some of what I think are the key policy decisions for the policymakers on the board. Obviously, the elephant in the room is what the school department's requested assessment request is. We will hopefully know that soon, but that's obviously sort of the thing outstanding that we don't know. That $262,000 in excess, in projected excess levy capacity, you know, what happens? Do we capture it and send it to reserves as we did last year, or this year, I should say, fiscal year 2022? Does it provide some piece of tax relief? Is it some combination thereof, et cetera? And then the one piece that the Board of Selectmen will want to consider over the next few months is in January, back up, the initial guidance from the federal government regarding the American Rescue Plan Act monies. Seemed as though that those monies passed in April by the federal government, signed by the president, would only be able to be used for very specific and mostly COVID-related items. Not all COVID-related, but, you know, very specific things. Now, last month, the U.S. Treasury came out with some final guidance. And that seems to indicate that contrary to those specific items, that those monies, that the money that the town has received directly and that the town will receive from the county, from the federal government, funded through the county, is that it will be able to be used more broadly and specifically for revenue replacement. So in particular, the almost $800,000 that the town has received directly from the federal government, that's one half of the monies promised. We have another approximately $800,000 coming there. This guidance seems pretty clear that we could use that towards sort of general, non-COVID-related items. All things being equal, it's a one-time revenue and we'd want to use it on a one-time expense. That said, it could be used towards operating expenses. However, certainly, if it was used in that way, we'd all need to acknowledge, you know, all the policymakers, that this would not be sustainable after the period when these monies run out and, which is now December 2024. So the funds are available to be spent until December 2024, but not after. And then there's a county piece. There are monies from the county, again, from ARPA. And do they, you know, will the county impose other restrictions? We don't really know right now, but we do know that they will likely allocate a big chunk of their funds to the town. And again, that same policy decision is out there. The primary decision really is, would they be used entirely or almost exclusively towards the sewer force main project, which is very clearly an eligible expense? And defray the, defray the expense on ratepayers, sewer ratepayers? Or instead, might some portion or all be used for other budgetary needs, either one-time capital or to supplement the operating budget in some way? So those in my mind are sort of the primary policy decisions ahead, in addition to, obviously, the expenditure decisions embedded in the operating budget. So, you know, it's a lot of information. As Kamala Kowalski said, it's the beginning of the process. But I'm obviously happy to take any questions or comments or anything, or no.
Anyone have any, anyone have any remarks or questions? Yes, Rosemary.
Just a question about the ARPA money. I know that, you know, when we were looking at these one-time monies, are we prepared to handle any clips, financial clips that happen when they end because they are short-term one-time monies? Or are we thinking in terms of one-time things that have to be done? And also, are we thinking about one-time things throughout each department equitably? Because we have a lot of capital issues, I think we all know that, and we're behind on the capital, and the power center, so that's it. Are we thinking in terms of that? I guess I want to know where you come up with the idea to put it towards the budget? What was the thought there?
I'm not saying it shouldn't be used towards the budget. I'm saying it is an option now that didn't exist a month ago.
Oh, it's an option now?
It's an option now that didn't exist a month ago because of the U.S. Treasury's final guidance. So it simply wasn't an option until, and now it is.
And we are aware of any risk of financial risks?
Well, I mean, so absolutely, that is an awareness that everyone would need to have. And that's, that's why, you know, it's a clear policy decision, right? So either it is a one-time revenue, right? So all things being equal, one-time revenues, in terms of budgeting, should be used for one-time expenditures. However, and as, again, as everyone, I think, knows in this, in this room, the Madden Report recognized that a operating override was very likely in fiscal year 2022, the current fiscal year, and almost certain on the trajectory we're at at that time in fiscal year 2023, the budget we're talking about here. So, you know, if there's, if there's a desire from policymakers to... That we know and that the town is intending and acknowledges that Madden Report piece, that yes, there will be an operating override, then that, and then, and these monies were used to put off that operating override, but everyone acknowledged that, yes, you know, this is necessary when, you know, at least in December 2024, that's an option. But obviously, the town would want to go into that option with a clear odds.
Was it a capital override or an operating override? I thought it was a capital override.
It's an operating override that Madden Report had suggested.
Thank you. I'll go over to the other notes.
Call in a second.
Oh, it was the call. Okay, that's where we have to, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the work that Lincoln and Ken have done. I think it's a great, great budget rollout, great first step. I think we go back to the slide that projects the impact to the taxpayer. I think we're all in agreement that this is something that, you know, the strategic plan outlined in one of our budget objectives is to get that line a little straighter. So I think, you know, with the proposed budget that we have in front of us, it kind of makes that in that direction. Can I kind of figure a little bit in the future where we're impacting the taxpayer with the construction projects we've got coming up on the near horizon?
For the middle school and hopefully we get back on track with the DPW. Can you kind of get a sense on how that chart will look with that in mind?
We can do some projections. There's a lot of unknowns that you simply can't project, primarily being what will the interest rate be when we go out and do long-term? Let's say, for example, that DPW building is approved in full...
Say a year from now.
And then that instruction happens, say, a year.
Say it occurs for a year.
That would be that the long-term borrowing for that project wouldn't be going out until, say, probably two years from now, let's say, spring of 2024. What will the interest rates be in spring of 2024? No one knows.
Probably higher, but no one knows.
So that's a key piece as to, we can make projections. They are by necessity not going to be exact projections. But certainly, if there's excluded debt at the middle school, certainly that line goes up, absolutely, without doubt.
Thank you, Lincoln. And just one more thing, when we scroll back to the slide that laid out the schedule for this budget season, were we also going to... we also going to consider how we incorporate the Capitol Committee in that timeline? I mean, obviously, we, I had a really good conversation with Don Essen last night, the new chairman of the Capitol Committee, to try to, you know, see if we can open up a really, a good line of communication and make a real focus on making sure that we really take a look at capital projects and we, you know, we make responsible recommendations based on the research that, you know, has to be part of it, you know? So, so I think if we can somehow incorporate in the slide with, obviously, with the Board of Selectmen's input as well, to somehow, you know, interject the Capitol Committee into this process so that we all, I think collectively, are moving in the same direction. That's all. Other than that, I had no further questions. Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have questions or comments?
Lincoln, on the wastewater management, is that dealing with dams that we have issues with?
Stormwater?
Yeah.
No, it wouldn't have any direct relationship to dams.
There is some failing. I think the one up on Pine Street needs to be looked at, and the one behind the Regal Building, the original, that needs to be looked at, you know, to deal with flooding. I mean, you know, we don't know.
Yep.
And that's going to be something in the future that we're going to have to look at and get repaired.
Yeah, and that's, those would definitely, if the town was going to choose to, to repair town-owned dams.
I think we only, I believe we only have two.
I believe we only have two that the town owns. So that would be a capital item, though, for sure.
And it also could be a danger if we do not do it.
Correct.
Because I know that the one on Pine Street, it failed at one time, and I can remember the superintendent, I forget his name, he just dropped the Jersey barrier in there and stopped the water. That was his way of fixing it, but that was 20 years ago. You can't do that anymore. But especially the one behind the Regal, I believe that's the original, and that needs to be looked at to make sure that we don't have floods. And actually, as it drains around the corner, behind that area, there are some areas that need to be looked at, too. There's like a stone wall that's there behind one of the buildings. It's, I think there's a nail shop down there or something where the water goes, and I do not know if that land is falling at all or whatever, but the DPW needs to look at that and make some suggestions, and that might be part of a project, too.
Lincoln, go ahead.
I was going to say, kind of along the same lines, you know, stormwater management kind of piqued my interest, being a utilities engineer. Is this for known projects that we need to get done, or are there, is it a required investment by DEP on current?
My understanding is that most of it is required, that we have sort of a little bit of a grace period because of previous work that we've done. But certainly, I'd, I think it would be best to get the specifics about stormwater, I think, for the board to hear directly from Superintendent Martin because he's the expert.
Fair enough.
I think it was a fantastic rollout of the budget. I think we probably all have concerns or questions in some part of it. But what I will say is, you know, through the past couple of years of, I mean, pretty good fiscal management from the town, we've gone from a necessary override to now producing a budget where we're not using any one-time money. And I think that's, you know, is a huge positive in that things are going in the right direction for this town. I personally, when it comes to one-time money, absolutely, we should not be using it for any recurring expense. No department should be using one-time money for any recurring expenses. But I think it's, obviously, I have some questions. I'm sure everyone here has individual questions, but I think it's a, it's a pretty good spot for us to modify from if we see fit. But the fact that it's a budget that, you know, is sustainable, I guess, I think we've done it. I think a lot of hard work, although things will adjust, obviously, as the process plays out. I think getting to this point, I'm pretty impressed.
I mean, the tax rate is going down, but the cost of the valuable houses are going up, so it offsets each other, you know? So, I mean, there may be an increase in the average person paying, but yet we're doing what we're doing to maintain a workable budget for the town.
And I think in this budget, you also see the town proposals of, you know, areas of growth that we've talked about, whether or not they're all, you know, are we going to get them all in this year? I don't know. I mean, still a lot of factors have to play out, but the fact that we are seeing areas that for years we've talked about weaknesses and bringing things back, that the possibility exists is pretty positive for me.
I'd like to reaffirm Rick's desire to somehow have the Capitol Committee recognized in the timeframe and the role that they play in the decisions we made. Maybe you can work on that for the next couple of weeks, and on February 15th.
Yeah, I was intending a separate, I mean, here's the operating budget, right? And I was intending sort of a separate discussion on the Capitol Committee, but absolutely, we can include them in the, in the schedule.
Anybody else? Well, OK, then. A motion to, is there a question? Yes.
Yeah, I was waiting to find anybody in the committee, but I have a question. Sure. Could you give just a rough percentage-wise for each department increase over the last year, including the schools, that $400,000 number?
I'd rather, I'd rather come back and do it at the next meeting, or we can talk offline about it because each department is different, primarily because of the targeted investments that we're talking about there. So I think it's definitely, obviously, it's a meaningful metric, but I don't have the figures in front of me about department by department, what the percentage increases are, but I can definitely...
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I was kind of thinking in regard to the Madden recommendation, roughly 2.5 and 5, you know?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I'm just kind of at the risk of, I know I've read that many times, I'm sure a lot of people in this room have, you know?
I think just as sort of a friendly reminder to what it says regarding the school budget is that while the historical increases have been 5%, that those required operating overrides that the report identified is to say probably in fiscal '22 and almost certainly in fiscal '23, that the report says, you know, those will happen with that increase still year-over-year. So I just want to sort of clarify that...
That what that report says doesn't say, oh, yes, this happens every year. It says that if this continues...
And needs to happen, this is what will happen.
Did you get a copy of the material? I'd be mistaken because I'm an English major, not a financier, but there's a, there's a percentage increase for each department on the, in that material. Yeah, and remember, this is totally preliminary because no one else, the Finance Committee hasn't worked on it. This is basically the town administrator's proposed budget, and the Selectmen haven't worked on it either. But there, but there is a, there is a designation for a percentage increase for each department.
But just not to correct you, I believe that percentage change is based off of the request, not the proposed.
It is, and the next report will have...
All right.
That, you know, we can slice it and dice it into different ways and run it through different ways. The next, my intention would be the next one would be a percent change from the next version.
I'll take care of your question, Sean.
I'll get you some more data. I promise.
You guys should stick together and, you know, straighten it out. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn is in order.
Oh, motion? Second.
Favor? I was opposed. Very much.